Are you ready to go?
We're all ready to go.
There we go.
There we go.
At this time, we'll call the regular meeting of the Town of Wallingford Inland Wetlands and Commission to Order. The date is April 5th. The time is 7:04. Please join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Debbie?
Debbie Phillips.
Jim Vitale.
Nick Kern.
Eileen McKean.
Caroline Reynus.
Erin O'Hare, environmental planner.
All right, going on to the minutes of the March meeting, is there any comments regarding the minutes? If not, I have one. And regarding to the violations, on page 16, I want to be sure that gets into the record that when we started that conversation regarding 69 Schoolhouse Road, I asked Erin what was her opinion on the fill that was in there. And as I remember, she said, "I've always wanted it to come out of there," or "I always felt it shouldn't be there." But it's not in the minutes. So I would like that in the minutes.
Regardless of which one, address 67 or 61? Regardless of 67 or 69?
It's 67.
67. I think it was considered both, but 67.
Mr. Chairman, would that be inserted before where it says Chairman Vitale asked or after where it says?
Well, I think when the commissioners wanted to be removed, I think I asked you first.
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
And I think that's how it started the conversation.
Okay, yeah, right, okay.
So.
So maybe Chair Vitale asked Erin?
Asked the staff what their opinion on the material.
Asked Ms. O'Hare, Ms. O'Hare, her opinion.
Whether the fill should stay or be removed.
Okay.
And the comment was you felt that it always should have been removed.
Be removed. And she said, "Removed." Oh, she said it's always been to be removed.
She always felt it should be removed.
She said she always felt it should be removed. And then Chair Vitale.
Then we went on to the rest.
Asked the commissioners.
Okay, that's in the minutes now?
It will be.
Okay.
Do you have another suggestion or?
Go ahead, Erin.
So that would be you would vote on the minutes as amended tonight.
I'm voting on the minutes as corrected, as amended.
As corrected or as amended tonight.
Yeah.
And then it's all set.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes from the regular meeting of March 1st, 2023, be accepted as submitted with the corrections made tonight.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Off for a vote.
Eileen McKean.
Debbie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, do, I've. Mr. Chairman, doesn't, don't you have to, is Eileen seated tonight? And is Caroline seated tonight?
Well, there's five of us. We're all seated.
We're all seated.
Well, but they're alternates, so they have to take the place of a member?
That's fine, but the people that are here tonight are seated members, voting seated members. Now, well, it's, I'm, I don't know where. Okay. All right. Old business, A18, 12.232 Barnes Road, bond release.
They're not ready.
Okay. A23, 2.1856 North Main Street Extension, Advanced Turbine Services, Building Edition.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Marcus Puttak, civil engineer at Godfrey Hoffman Hodge, 26 Broadway, North Haven.
Can you spell Puttak for the secretary?
P-U-T-T-O-C-K. Good evening, commissioners. This is a commercial, an existing commercial site. I brought the original site plan with me as my first exhibit just to familiarize with what was there before and how this began. It was an open piece of land. The rear was cut out and filled in the front to make a flat shelf for a commercial building, which was proposed to be enlarged at a later date with a larger parking area, which never happened because zoning wouldn't allow a larger building until very recently. So as zoning was changed recently, this is the existing condition, the building driveway from North Main Street, parking, the loading docks for bringing in materials, and then the steep slope that was cut out and a flat grassed area with the two swales which drain to a larger detention pond on the adjacent parcel. Over time, these two swales have not been maintained as grass swales, and so they have become overgrown, become litter, full of leaf litter, eroded, and now meet the definition of a wetland and/or a water course. And that's why we're here this evening, because we have a pocket of wetland in the rear, or two pockets of wetlands, really. One that drains north from about the, just about the middle of the site, and then one that drains south, also from the middle of the site. So it splits all the drainage that comes off of the hill above them and drains it down around the building to the adjacent parcels. Our proposal, before you see me, is to add a 6,800 square foot addition to the building along with a drive-up driveway. This addition would not be a loading dock. It would have straight doors where they could drive vehicles directly into the building and eliminating the grass pad between the loading docks and replacing it with a concrete pad and pavement. The reason for removing this island in the middle is it's intrusive for loading purposes and for storage purposes, temporary storage purposes. When they have turbines come in in large crates, they set them down, and they don't have anywhere to set them because of this lawn area. So they would like to remove that, make it all pavement so that it's easier to keep clean, keep the snow off, and for them to move the turbines around as they come and go. So the basis of this is a building in the rear, which is 50 in the full width of the building, and a driveway, and some storm drainage improvements, which we'll go to next. As I mentioned, there's a large detention, dry bottom detention pond on the adjacent parcel, which was created for the entire industrial area when it was created, the industrial subdivision. All of the existing drainage, including the roof leaders, go down through traditional catch basins and manholes and drain directly to that basin. We propose to cut off the existing roof drainage from directly draining to the detention pond and putting it into an underground storage system, as well as putting the proposed roof leaders into an underground detention system, which will keep all of the first inch of rain from the site within it, and then meter out every other storm so that the peak flow is mitigated. No increase in peak flow will result from this construction. The other piece of this proposal, if I can get the page turned, is to go through and do some of the maintenance to the swales, which are now wetlands. That's long overdue. Essentially, remove any of the invasive plants that are no good and clean it up, make sure that it is graded appropriately so that it will drain as it was intended, and then replant it with a wetland seed mix and some sedge-type grasses. That's the, that's the whole project. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any specific questions.
Debbie?
No, no questions right now.
Those areas you said that are overgrown, that haven't been maintained, the wetlands areas, you're going to bring them back to be in retention for stormwater?
They didn't retain, they weren't intended to retain water. They were, they were meant to be a swale that would guide the water away at, you know, at a gentle pace, but to actually guide it away. And because they've gotten overgrown with all types of plants, some invasive, some not, they don't drain as well as they should. We'd like to replace those and maintain them better going forward so that they continue to shed water away in an appropriate way.
Do we want to put a wetland plaque, placards out there, Erin?
We propose one, two of them, one at each end of the new proposed driveway. This is, this right now is just a lawn area, essentially right up to the wetlands. It's all just a lawn, and it would remain such right up to where that wetland is, and then there'd be the new wetland-planted grasses. And we could certainly put two placards on a post that say, "There's wetlands here. Don't place anything else in there."
What do you think, Erin?
Well, I want to say a few things. The environmental planners report went out in your packet. You got it Friday night. I've been out to the site three times now. The photographs really give you a sense, in the back, the colored photographs on the back of it, give you a sense of where this new addition would go. You probably can't see it from there, but if you got a copy in front of you. And it is close to the wetlands, okay? Very close. The building on the south side is about the actual corner of the building, 26 feet from the wetlands on one side, 25 feet from the wetlands on the other side. And then the activity area to build the driveway is about 15 feet away from the wetlands. Now, normally, we would not really encourage an applicant to propose something so close to the wetlands. In this case, it's a little different. This is not new development. This is redevelopment. So we always take a little, little different look at it that way. And also, we have to consider the value of the wetlands. There was a wetland report that was in the original application. Davison Environmental did that. And he says that it's altered, it's aquents, which are disturbed and altered wetlands. He says that originally it was ray-poll soils, but in the original development, do you know the date, Marcus, when this was?
The original development was 1990, or 1980, I apologize.
1980?
Yep.
Okay.
The plans were from '79, and then it was developed in '80. This area was cut down about 10 feet at that time.
Okay. So this commission wasn't around yet. Commission started in 1988. So this was back in the day when the DEP, it was DEP then, was running things from Hartford. And so I can see how things maybe were not approved like we do it after that time period, and maybe even if they were approved by the DEP a certain way or permitted a certain way, then the developer might have taken a little, few liberties. And hence, the ray-poll wetlands were turned into, are now aquent wetlands. Now, of course, when they develop it, they put in a stormwater swale, and that churns up things again. But it was approved for stormwater maintenance in 1980. So over the years, like Marcus mentioned, it wasn't maintained, and now it's, I don't know, I like wetlands, I was about to say it's a tract of wetland. Yes, there are some invasives. There's a whole patch of fragmities. Yes, there's briars in some spots. Yes, there's canary grass in some spots. But I think I saw a little bit of knotweed, maybe, but not a lot. And there's a 25-foot alder tree that's in bloom right now. So it has, and it has some dogwood bushes that grow in wetlands that are healthy bushes. So it's not, it's not all scrap invasives, as might be treated a little differently. So in, they originally were going to go in, on the original plan, they were going to do a swath 35 feet at the widest. And I said, "Wait a minute, wait a minute. Why do you have to, I understand you want that channel dug out to get the water flowing better. I understand that." And this is black organic soil. You can see it in some of the pictures. And I understand it's really gotten overgrown in most places, but can we just save some of the better wetland vegetation? There was a ton of birds when I went there, like hundreds of birds, different species flying around. They love it back there. And so Marcus worked with me, and yes, you can see the condition of, actually, he revised the plan, and it indicates that, but also that my suggested conditions of approval indicate that, that I would go out and tag these wetland plants that are worth, that I feel strongly should be saved. There's, you know, obviously, they have to maintain it, so they, I don't want a whole row of plants so they can't get into the channel and maintain it. So obviously, it's got to have some areas they can get in there. Now, what they're proposing is to take a mini excavator, go down, and then plant, when they're done, seed wetland conservation mix and plugs, correct? Plugs? Plugs of wetland plants. These are things that grow maybe max three feet high, maybe mostly two feet, three feet high. And so there's a condition there about making that stabilized, because I could just see a storm washing all those seeds out, because this is a stormwater swale. So, so one of the conditions talks about it's got to be stabilized before, definitely before the winter.
So what are we, what are we doing here?
Erin, I just asked you, do you think we need wetland plaques out there? Once this is all done, the way the water curls around and goes to the larger, you're talking about all the different wetland species that are going to be out there. Do you want to see some wetland plaques out there to let people know that there is a wetland area and this is?
Yes.
To be protected? That's all I ask you. Are you there to answer or no?
You're making the presentation for him.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
It is not.
Okay. But yes, Marcus has agreed to the plaques, and yes, I also reiterate in the conditions, suggested conditions of approval, there were two, you can add more.
Oh, 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 stop, stop. Let's go down to the rest of the commissioners' comments first, then we can come back to them. Ally?
No, I don't have any comments.
Caroline?
Me either, thank you.
Well, I did. Everybody forgot about me. Okay. What are you going to do? How are you protecting the swale from being involved in your construction project?
This swale will be on the opposite side of the silt fence. So we have a silt fence between the swale and our construction throughout construction.
So that's going to be your boundary, your dedicated line?
For the construction of the building and the driveway, yes.
And is that silt fence going to be right on the wetland line?
It is, it is not. It's a few feet away.
And how about in that corner, put up some orange construction fence?
In this corner?
No, I'm thinking of down.
Around the building, where it gets really close? We certainly could add that. I don't, I don't see that being a addition.
Because that is, I don't care what contractor you use, it's only as good as the operator on the machine, and unless the signs are in some foreign language, probably there'd be a problem. Also, now, you talked about the roof drainage. You're not recharging the roof drainage.
We are, we are recharging, so the stormwater system here will take in and does have capacity to recharge into the ground as much as it can. We dug a test hole and did two perks. It is, it's open bottom, open side, which is surrounded by stone. The soil out here takes in water at about 0.2 inches an hour, so not, not very well. So, but it does take some.
And then when it fills, it goes to the retention pond?
That's right. And it has small holes inside.
Now, is that piped directly to the retention pond or through the swale?
It's piped to one of the, the closest existing catch basin, and then goes down into the pond from there.
Open bottom. All right. Okay. Back over to Erin.
Today, I went by there just to, because I was driving by anyway. I had asked the owner to clean out the catch basins. There were two catch basins on the site that I couldn't see because they got so much debris and a broken lumber and all sorts of stuff on top. So he did clean, I saw one, Marcus cleaned out, and I have it, I want to show the commission.
Okay, that's good. The other one you couldn't find?
Actually, the other one I couldn't find, I took a picture of it, but it's, unless it.
What effect does that have on this application?
Well, maybe you don't have to, one of them, it's, there's just, let me ask, Marcus hasn't seen this.
Yep.
This is the one that I could barely see, but there's a lot of trash that gets down in there.
Yes, sir.
Where does that come from?
I'm told by the owner that a lot of people go and park up there on the weekends and just hang out and drink and whatever else young people and whatnot do when they go somewhere and park. And they believe that a lot of it comes from that.
Oh, I know that that's a hotspot to park 4th of July night because you get a really good view of both Wallingford and Meriden's fireworks from there.
That is fascinating.
From the parking lot above.
Yep.
Okay, so, well, that, the stormwater maintenance plan should, I don't think it does.
It does include removing any trash debris, all of that.
It does?
It does.
Yeah. Okay. Because it's, it really was rather alarming.
Yes.
Small stuff, no couches, no couches.
No, there's lots and lots of junk down there, absolutely, 100%.
Yeah. But, so if the commission is thinking of approving this tonight, I would like to just take a little bit of time to talk about this thing that we've encountered where we approve something, and one of the conditions is you maintain it, and then it gets put off. Either there's a financial problem or whatever, or they, they launch right into it, and first they build the building, and they don't do the maintenance that we've waited, I don't know, 10 years for. So how can we make that happen first? Or is that even possible, Marcus, to make the maintenance part happen first before the building's all done and the driveway's all in?
I think it'd be a mistake to clean it all up and then, then do a whole bunch of construction near it. While I would hope that no damage occurs during the construction, there is some chance, and I don't think you'd want to do the work twice. I think if we do all of the construction and then clean it up, I would say the way to enforce that is to hold the bond, you know? Obviously, you have erosion control bonds if you, if you, if there's added piece to the bond that.
What are you referring to, Erin? It says cleanup. What are you, what are you referring to? Are you suggesting they put the swale in first? Because that might be a beneficial situation here, so there's no overflow into your construction site. Should the swale go in first? The cleanup of the swale?
Okay.
Then I, then we don't care if he builds the building or not.
Exactly, exactly.
So the swale should go in first, then?
That's kind of what I'm, no, that's kind of what I'm saying, yes, because then we're assured it is done.
Or do you want to just put a bond, a heavy bond on this?
Okay, I didn't suggest one, but yes, if that's the way to get that swale maintenance, and there's two, there's two swales, and there's two different catch basin grates that are not maintained. So, but again, there's the seasonal, those are, when they're maintained, the seed and the plants have to go in. They can't go in in July, they'll cook to death. So there's a little bit of play with that. They basically have to go in, like, September.
Well, that, if he's got a bond up there, he'll put them in so they'll survive.
Right, but I'm thinking it does involve a little bit of scheduling to get your plants in in September. When is your building done? You know, when would you do the building? October?
I think he wants to, tomorrow. If he can build the building tomorrow, he will build it tomorrow. So they're going to, they need to get this building up as soon as possible. They need the space. So there's a good chance they're done with the building by September when they're ready to do the planting.
Actually, I have a question. Could, in theory, this is a hypothetical, could they build the building and the driveway and never do the swale? Is that possible? Or is there something going on there, overflows or flooding, that are making them maintain this swale today? That they come in to propose to maintain it today?
It, there is no function of the swale that mandates that it must be done, they must do this maintenance work now or ever to build this building. They're not necessarily related, other than we had to come to the wetland commission, so we came for both at the same time. If the commission said, "No, you can't do anything to the wetlands," then we would have to live with that. As long as we can build the building and the driveway, which is really what he needs in order to be able to stay here as a business, he needs this, this extra piece of building. So, you know, that.
Erin, they haven't been good stewards over the last years with maintaining what they put in originally. So I think a hefty construction or whatever kind of bond. Yeah, conservation bond be put in place, they're going to do it because they're going to want their money back. So I think we can resolve your issue by letting them put the building up, redo the swales, and then they'll, you know, get their conservation easement back, I mean, their conservation bond back. I don't believe we need to have them go in there and go backwards with what they want to do. Because like he just said, they want to get that building up as quick as possible. So I think because of the past, because of the past history of the application, or the applicant, we just give them a bond, conservation bond, to make sure everything is done when they pull out of the driveway. Everything will be, you know, satisfactory to your, your standards.
Okay, do you have an amount in mind?
I, I think if they don't do it and we have to go in there afterwards and do it, either a $10,000 or $15,000 bond would be adequate.
Do you have a problem with that?
I will say, I would say no. I think, based on my conversations with my client, I would say that that'll be fine.
All right. So you're, you're agreeing to all the conditions of approval?
Yes, we reviewed them and.
Okay, all conditions of approval. We're going to add a orange construction fence on, I don't know what corner of the.
The, the south corner.
It's a south, southeast.
Southeast, southeast.
Southeast side of the property, the south.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess.
As long as we identify it.
Yeah.
And a bond of $15,000.
Okay.
Okay? Commissioners, anything else?
No.
All right. Then at this time, I'll entertain, entertain a motion regarding significant activity.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A23-2.1856 North Main Street Extension, Advanced Turbine Services, be declared not a significant impact activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Off for a vote. Caroline?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A- Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 23-2.1, 856 North Main Street Extension, Advanced Turbine Services, be approved with the conditions of approval in the environmental planners report, and in the addition of two, two things, that orange construction fencing be placed on the southeast corner of the property, and there would be a conservation bond of $15,000.
Motion made. Is your second?
Second.
Made in second, any discussion?
Significant activity, or.
Would this significant?
McKean?
Yes.
All right, motion made in seconded. Any other discussion? Call for a vote. Caroline?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
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 That was easy.
Good. Okay. There really isn't much more on here that, well, I want to, we got a receipt of an application that happens to be a neighbor of mine. Not that I, I didn't even know he was a neighbor until Aaron pointed it out, so we'll have a discussion on that. And the receipt of the new application, item two, application A 23, 3.2, 300 Church Street, this is upgrading the existing deck at Westbrook Lobster. They weren't expanding, I think they were just making it more safe. So, Aaron and I had a discussion, and we gave it administration approval. I hope everybody's in favor of it. Elections, I don't know why this is on the agenda. I think we, we did that last month.
I think it was maybe because I, I made the motion, and I wasn't supposed to.
Oh, no, 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 no. That's my error. When I did the agenda, I didn't delete it. I should have deleted that from the new agenda. That's from the March agenda. I apologize. But, Mr. Chairman, if we could go back to one item under Old Business D 3?
Oh, I'm sorry. I know the answer, so, but Aaron's correct. Under Old Business, application 23, 2.2, 86 Barnes Road, 950 North Main Street, Wallingford LLC. This is a commercial development, self-storage on the corner where that massive old, I think it's a white oak tree is. And the neighbor next door is the applicant, Mr. Panetta.
Paretta, Vinnie Paretta.
Vinnie.
Has those storage units.
And they are requesting to be postponed until next month. They haven't got all their i's dotted and t's crossed, correct?
There's a lot of issues, well, you might have, you saw the environmental planners report went out Friday, a lot of questions for their wetland scientist who could not be here tonight, but besides, he's got to answer the questions. They did the test pits this week, and they got some higher groundwater than they really wanted to get out there, so that was another reason. I do have comments from the, the town engineer that was up. As you can see, that's very lengthy, a bunch of stuff that was missing or should, needs to be looked at again in the drainage calculations. So, there's a host of things going on out there, but they should be ready by next month.
Please warn them, don't come in the night of the meeting, and know, here's the report, because if the report isn't done, given to you by Friday and in our packets, they can go back another month. Okay? So, just give them the heads up. Everything else is pretty much where it was.
I wanted to point out the budget, the budget hearings.
Okay.
Would you like to go over them, or should I?
No, the budget, the budget is pretty much the same it has been for the last few years. The only increase was they gave us $3,500 for peer review people.
Well, yeah, we, we get that every year, but they also bumped it up a little bit for our increased cost increases in the legal notice publications.
Okay, that's what it was.
And in the courier and various other expenses, so it bumped up by $2,100. And so, but I wanted to point out, the hearing, the public hearing for the department is April 10th at 6 o'clock. They go department by department, so, and it's here in the chamber. And then, the, that's for the public hearing. That's for the public to come and make comments. And then, the town council goes in their own sort of workshop hearing for each department and each agency, and that takes place on April 27th at 6:30.
Yeah, but when's the wetland agenda? 9:30 or something, wouldn't it?
At night?
Didn't you have it there? Didn't I see that that's when wetlands was going to be discussed?
9:30?
I guess not. I'm mistaken.
No, no. I, you never know when you're going to, how long the people before you take?
I, I.
You know, sometimes the departments before you take forever, sometimes they're dismissed. So, it's, you never know what's going to, how long the meeting is going to be.
Okay. I missed, I must have misread it regularly. I told Aaron, we had this discussion, and I said to Aaron that I don't know how long it's been, but we haven't increased our budget, I would bet you five years or more. So, for them to give us an extra $2,100 or $2,200 for something beyond our control such as courier or postage, they shouldn't have, they really shouldn't have any, any argument over it. So, that shouldn't be an issue. Have you heard anything about Schoolhouse Road?
No.
No. I don't know the status of Little K's. There's been a lot of rumors around and about whether they're still up and doable or not. I have no idea. You was, you were going to check with Janice regarding the legality of going after him?
I did check, again, right after the last meeting, and I haven't heard back. How, in other words, the owners got the violation order from the commission at the last meeting to remove the material.
Right.
And they were given a six-month period. So, the question I had to the law firm is, okay, that went to the owners, what is the appropriate order to be given to the contractor? Because, you know, it's not clear that the contractor should come on the property, you know, it's all that. So, that, I haven't gotten back, but I, of course, it's, I would like the commission to indicate that the order still remains on all these, that the notice of violation still remains on all of these that are listed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the notice of violations on 1 through 6 on our agenda remain.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm not sure with that situation with Little K's, if he's in his own, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know what his status is, whether he may have anything or may not have anything to contribute to this removal of material. So, Janice will figure it out.
Yes.
Okay. Nice, quick meeting tonight. I think everything is in order. Do you want these pictures back? These are the ones of my neighbor.
You, if they're, they're going to go out in the packet, the next packet that goes out, so.
So, you don't need these, then?
No, I don't need them. I have got them on my computer, but I did want to encourage the commissioners on their own to go see this before the next meeting, if they can.
Okay. Now, this, this is 678 North Elm Street, almost at the intersection of Grebe Road. You indicated that they gave us permission to go down and visit the property?
Yes. Well, yes.
And I can tell you a little bit of history, I know, I know a lot of history on it. There was a magnificent beech tree in the front yard, and Brian McDermott, who was from Wallingford and was a state senator for a while, he bought the lot, and to save the beech tree, and he set the house way back from the road. Needless to say, the beech tree died, very similar to what Cho School did down at the new meth center. That ended up giving him almost no backyard, because that pushed the house to the rear of the property. So, I don't know this gentleman, but I can, I can, I can understand why he doesn't have a backyard. It was because Brian was trying to save the tree. It didn't work. So, I think any of us can stop by and go look at the backyard. The brook, the brook that deals with this comes from across the street, Ice Pond, and through Stigus's property, and it comes across and corners my property, and then, as it leaves behind this gentleman, it goes diagonally across the whole farm, heading down towards community pool. So, in the summertime, it becomes very dry. In fact, don't, you've got to be a little careful here. I haven't got there to look close lately, but the Williams family owned the house the last, until it was subdivided and whatnot, and they actually had a cement pond down there that was their swimming pool, part of the brook system, so.
If, if folks are going to go out, and I encourage you to, because from.
What's that?
I was just saying, from the front of the house, you kind of say, so what?
Can't say anything.
You get in back of the house and go, woo! Woo! It goes way down to the swamp. But this gentleman doesn't own any, as far as I know, that he doesn't own any wetlands. He, the wetlands are right at the edge of his property, as far as I could tell. But I could also tell that the developer had filled wetlands to build his lot. What was that, 20, 30 years ago or something? So, you can see, I'd like you to see the edge of the fill, which I don't think this owner did, but, so, you know, yeah, it drops off.
Okay. Anything else that come before us tonight?
Uh, no.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter.